I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights Iowa City Council Meeting, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And the meeting tonight is being conducted electronically. Thank you, everyone, for attending. First order of business is roll call, and all five council are present. And then approval of minutes for regular meeting August tenth, special meeting August twenty-fourth, and special meeting August ninth. I'll take them all together unless there's some additions or corrections. Are there any additions, corrections to any of these minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Then we'll go to public input. There are some members of the public here tonight. Would anyone like to speak to the council? You have five minutes. Let Mike know you'd like to speak. Okay, I don't hear anybody wanting to speak tonight, so we'll go on first order of business. Some of these we're going to take out of order because we have several guest speakers. And so first of all, we'll do Steve Cool, who's here for Resolution two thousand and one thirty-eight about the IDOT Annual City Street Financial Report. Steve, would you like to start?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. I don't know if Mike was going to bring up the PDF. There we go. Okay, I'm just going to take about five or ten minutes and go over this report. This is an annual required report from the Department of Transportation to show all of the expenditures that are related to street sidewalks and closely related items. And then also revenues. There's a few other miscellaneous items which I'll briefly go over. First page here on the expenses, most of these are pretty much all self-explanatory. I'm just going to quickly go down on streetlights. Okay, engineering fees. We have that split into two funds, road uses, general streets and sidewalks matters and so forth. And then the capital projects, fifty-five thousand, that's for the Olive Court and the Gulfview projects. That was a total of seventy-seven, a little over seventy-seven thousand. Street maintenance expense, that's just various repairs, small panel replacements, repairs and so forth. Street signs, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Okay.
We can't hear you, Steve. Did you freeze up?
Capital improvements. No. Can you hear me okay yet?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay. Okay. So in the street improvements expenditure, about four hundred and eighty thousand. Approximately three-fourths of that is for the Olive Court, and that project was completed by June thirtieth. The remaining approximately twenty-five percent is progress billings on Gulfview. Okay, the next three line items, principal payment, interest payment and bond registration fees. This pertains to the street portion of two bond issues. The two thousand and sixteen O U P, streets and infrastructure. And then also the two thousand and seventeen street bond. There's another page that'll have more detail on that. Transfers out. This is not exactly the same thing as transfers in, transfers out on the annual financial report that we'll have. Basically here in other special revenues, the sixty-seven thousand, that was transferred from special assessments to debt service, and that was to pay the other part of the the O U P bond. Transfer out from the general fund, basically what that is. That is the amount on the two-street projects because we have not bonded yet. We have to show some kind of a source for this, and we'll see that in the next page on the revenues. It's basically the property taxes out of the general fund is what's funding the rest of those projects until the bonds are sold. Traffic control and safety, that's traffic lights, striping and various other street items. Snow removal, almost seventy-eight thousand dollars. That was an unusual year, unusually high. And then the last item, street cleaning. So we have grand total of expenditures, one million eighty-six thousand less transfers out of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, so we're looking at about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of streets and sidewalks and debt service-related expenses. Going on to the revenue page. Okay, the first line there, property taxes levied on property, the two hundred and fifty-three, that was what I was just talking about, the money that the general fund is using to pay those two-street projects until we get the refinanced. In the debt service column, that is, that's the actual levy for the two thousand and seventeen bond. Next line, road use tax in the state, hundred and fifty-seven thousand. I know that's over budget, and it was more than what we had projected. I'll have the final comparison when we do the annual report in a couple of months. Okay, local contributions in the capital projects, that's the portion that the City of Iowa City funded for Olive Court this last year. Two lines down, assessments, that is the special assessments, O U P. The next line down, contributions in capital projects, sixty thousand, that was the developer's contribution for Olive Court that was received this last year. The next line, sale of assets, that is, in the year before, we used something like fifty-seven thousand dollars out of the lot sale or lot sale money from a few years ago. The Olive Court lot sales to pay for that. The hundred and ninety-four thousand is the remainder out of the two hundred and fifty-two thousand that we used out of that certificate of deposit to pay for Olive Court. And then transfers in, those are the same items that were transfers out from the expenses. So we ended up with one million, one hundred and thirty thousand of expenditures less the transfers in or revenue. So we actually took in a little over eight hundred thousand dollars to fund our expenses this last year. Let's see, going on to the next page is bonds and loans. These these bonds and loans listed are only the portions of the bonds that relate to street improvements and similar. We have both the two thousand and seventeen and then the two thousand and sixteen O U P. The columns on the right half of the page show the principal paid on each of those bonds, and then same for interest. Those are going to be the same numbers that are listed on the expense page. Let's see, we just have a couple pages left. The next one, equipment, we don't have any road graders or any street equipment on the street projects. We have to list each year completed projects that exceed the public bid threshold. I don't remember exactly what the number is. Josiah would know what that is. It's fifty or fifty-five thousand, something like that. This is the Olive Court project, which was completed before June thirtieth. That was the original contract price to the contractor, and then also the final price after change orders. And the next page, this is just a summary of both the expenses and revenues from prior pages. We'll see here at the ending balance here. For purposes of this report, we have a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of unspent road use tax money on hand. And the next column, other special revenue, that is, that's on the special assessments. We've accumulated a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars more than what's been needed for debt service so far. I've mentioned this in the past, that even those assessments are payable over a period of like eight to ten years or so. Some people have paid more of those, and some people have paid all of their assessments, so that's just extra money on hand that will be used for future debt service on the O U P bond. The other projects end up with ending balances of zero, and I believe that's required required by the D O T how to present the summary. So that is the total of the, or that's the whole report that I will be submitting, except we have one final item that we're still waiting for, trying to get the final exact numbers, and that would be the the derecho expenses and then also reimbursements. Some of the derecho expense was related to like the Swisher tract and maybe some other things that don't qualify for the share that's streets and sidewalks, or at least in the street right-ofways. As soon as we get that figured out, then I will just be adding that expense. And then likewise, I believe so far, we've gotten, we've gotten the federal share reimbursement, which I believe was seventy-five percent of the qualifying. And I believe we still have a state reimbursement.
Yes.
Got amount coming. Okay.
Yes. And so they haven't closed it out yet.
Right.
It should be shortly.
Uh huh. So as soon as we get that state amount, or as soon as it's known whether we actually get it or not, then I will just put the derecho items on this and reportedly ready to file with the Department of Transportation.
Okay. Are there any questions for Steve? We have Resolution two thousand and one thirty-eight before the council, which is approving and adopting the IDOT Annual City Street Financial Report, seven one twenty to six thirty twenty-one. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll motion.
Motion by Lisa in a second. I think I heard Sarah.
Yeah.
So I'll count you as a second. Okay. Thank you. Discussion, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Herbald.
I'm.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Sullivan.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
I need Doug.
Hi, sorry.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
We'll let you go for now if you want. Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll go on to ARPA update, and we have all the staff here from Johnson County. And they're going to give a summary, a review to the rest of the council, what it all means and what these funds can be used for. We had a meeting, as I told, as I reported to you with with Allison and Ray and Donna a month, a month ago, I think it was in August, early August or late July. And so I'll throw it to Donna or Ray or Allison. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you guys so much for inviting us to speak at your city council meeting. And thank you so much for attending our public input session in August, I believe. Thank you. It didn't go the way that we hoped that it would, but we're working through that. Allison, do you want to lead the discussion tonight, or do you want me to continue?
Sure, yeah, I can speak too. So the American Rescue Plan Act was passed in in March of this year, and the money is broadly going to COVID relief, but it is interpreted broadly. Each entity received a certain allocation by population, so Johnson County received twenty-nine point three million, and I believe University Heights around a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And so each entity has been tasked with gathering public input from their residents to help governing bodies determine how to spend these funds. And Johnson County has gathered a leadership team, and we've been meeting regularly since February to create sort of a structure and a process for Johnson County, and part of that is we would like to be a resource to the smaller cities in Johnson County if you are willing and interested. So we are, we have developed a framework. It is available on our website. We have a particular ARPA webpage. It's JohnsonCountyIowa.gov/ARPA for ARPA. And that's where we sort of give regular updates. But currently, where Johnson County is in the process is we are gathering public input. We have a number of tools for doing that. One is a more general public survey, and that's on our website, and it looks like, I appreciate it, you guys have shared it on the University Heights' website as well. And those survey, that survey, residents can indicate where, what city they live in, and then we can aggregate data based on where they live. So we actually just put in a request this afternoon to our data guy to pull some results for University Heights specifically for later this week. So we'll share that with you when we have that of sort of the results thus far. But we encourage you to, through your communication channels, to push out that survey and encourage residents to indicate that they're in University Heights, that that information can be helpful to to them as residents of the county, but also as residents of University Heights. And then we were in the middle of doing a series of public in-person input sessions. We've done three of a planned seven, six?
Six.
Six, six, only three more. And and those are various formats, but they are intended to gather public input in a more yeah, in an in-person manner. Our next public input session is on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, from six to seven thirty at the Solon Community Center in the cafeteria. This is all on our website too, but I'll just say it out loud for public record. The next one is on Tuesday, October twelfth, from six to seven thirty PM at the Lone Tree Community School, also in the cafeteria. And then our final one is sort of a wrap-up. We've hired a team of consultants, and they will present sort of the results of public input thus far, and then we'll have an open public comment period for the public to respond to what input they've received so far. And that will be on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, from six to eight PM in the Johnson County Administration Building in the boardroom. And so because it's in the boardroom, we will have a Zoom option for participating for that as well. We invite all members of the public to come to all of these input sessions, and we'd encourage you to encourage your communication channels for people to come. These next two are sort of further out in the county, but anyone from anywhere in Johnson County can come to any of these meetings. And yeah, that's a basic overview. I could talk, we can sort of talk about whatever you would like to talk about. But one other thing that I want to mention, as I mentioned before, Johnson, the American Rescue Plan Act has a number, it's interpreted COVID broadly, and so there's a number of eligible uses in which to spend the money, and there's a series of guidance. But the large buckets for consideration are supporting the public health response, so some of the more traditional things you'd think of in terms of resiliency to a pandemic. Replacing public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, and essential workers are defined as people who had regular in-person interactions or were regularly physically handling items also handled by other people. Addressing the negative economic impacts, which has a lot of subcategories from childcare to housing to transportation, things like that. Broadband infrastructure and water and sewer infrastructure. Donna and Ray, do you have anything you'd like to add?
The only other thing I'd like to add is, yesterday we had a public input session that was kind of had a targeted focus area of negative economic impacts for residents, for workers, for small business owners. And we have a separate survey available on our website in English and Spanish, and I know in our first meeting with with University Heights leadership, you guys had identified that maybe small, you know, helping support small businesses or some of the impacted industries in University Heights may be an area of interest for your for your funding investment, so please feel free to share that more targeted questionnaire about negative economic impacts with your residents. And we can send a direct link if you, so you don't have to search for it, if that's something you guys would be interested in.
And this is Ray, and I would just add too, that keep in mind that we're primarily talking about the funds that are coming to the local governments. This was a huge bill. It was billions of dollars. And I'll just give you a couple other kind of funding sources that I think could be beneficial to University Heights down the road, because there are lots of federal agencies that are getting a lot of money that you could tap into. For instance, there's fifty-three point seven billion dollars going into FEMA. There's fifty-eight point three billion dollars going into transportation and infrastructure, and that's separate from the infrastructure and capital bill that's going through the House and Senate right now. There's forty billion dollars going into housing, a hundred and fifty-nine point one billion dollars going into healthcare, sixty-seven billion dollars going into small business assistance, a hundred and seventy-one billion dollars going into our schools, and that trickles down to our local level. All of our school districts in Johnson County are getting ARPA money to help them respond to COVID pandemic. There's two hundred and four million dollars in oversight to the bill, actually, sixteen point nine billion dollars in Veterans Affairs, the three hundred and sixty billion dollars that Allison and Donna talked about, four hundred and thirty point eight billion dollars went to direct payments to our residents of the United States. And then five point two billion dollars into food and farm, and two hundred and forty-four billion into labor and unemployment. So definitely keep your eyes open and use your staff and consultants to seek other grants and infrastructure money that you may be eligible for in University Heights. And again, we're happy to help you kind of navigate these programs as they come up.
You had mentioned at the leadership meeting that University Heights is quite unique, you know, we don't have you know, like, you know, one of the things that you mentioned it could be used for was water sewer, and our water and sewer comes from the City of Iowa City. And could we review some of the things that you suggested specifically for University Heights, other than, of course, the small business impact?
Yeah, I can hit a couple and then let Donna and Allison jump in. You know, some of the things, if you have a project that you're working on or want to work on, even if it's with Iowa City, and you're doing infrastructure, so sewer water, stormwater, and street improvements, you can use your ARPA money to help fund your portion of that project. So that's great. If you're looking at doing any kind of stormwater impact studies or analysis, this is a great use of that funds, because, you know, stormwater is a big issue, especially in the metro area with the rivers and the flooding that we've had in the past. So if you're looking at even doing studies or any kind of stormwater projects, this, these funds can be used for that. And one of the things that we didn't really hit on was, if the county lost any funds during the last fiscal year, you can repay yourself for those funds. And there's a very specific formula that hopefully your treasurer can help you with, or accounting firm, or we can, you know, give you some guidance on that.
And that's, yeah, that's the allowable use, replace public sector revenue loss, and you, yeah, through the US Treasury guidance, you use, in most cases, fiscal year nineteen as a base year to calculate what your revenue loss would be. And I know we talked to you guys, those could be things like anything, utilities, parking tickets, fines, any revenue loss that the City of University Heights experienced as a result of the pandemic would be an allowable use for for public sector revenue replacement. We talked also about impacted industries. And some of the things that are included within impacted industries are tourism, travel and hospitality. And I know University Heights sees a major influx in visitors for the game day, you know, football seasons. And I also know you guys just got a new hotel there that was kind of thwarted as a result of the pandemic, so those could be allowable uses. Also, you can make direct payments to workers or families, and that could include, you know, food, housing, direct cash payments, things like that. And I want to mention that Johnson County has expanded our general assistance program, basically quadrupled the eligibility and increased the funding times four as well, so up to two point five million is the initial increase in funds, and we raised eligibility so that, you know, someone who is living on a fixed income, receiving social security, and is within, at or below two hundred percent of the federal poverty rate, can receive assistance up to eight hundred and fifty dollars a month for three months. And that's any resident of Johnson County. So if you're hearing from residents of University Heights that they're needing some emergency financial assistance, please do direct them to Johnson County General Assistance. We do not require that they disclose citizenship status, so that's available to to any resident in Johnson County, regardless of citizenship status, and including those who are previously excluded because of receiving other federal benefits such as disability or social security.
Are there any questions for them? We have a
Did you say the the expected portion for the City of University Heights, you said it was around one hundred and fifty thousand? Is that correct?
One fifty-two, I think, or one fifty-four.
Okay.
One fifty-two, I think. Because we received the first half payment of seventy-six, you know, seventy-six thousand something, so I think that's one fifty-two. Yeah.
So that's a good question, and you got the first half. Within twelve months, you'll get the second half, and then you have up to four years to obligate and expend those funds.
Obligate by two thousand and twenty-four and spend by two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. That's why we're a team.
Wow. You know, it's wonderful that the Board of Supervisors got you three leaders to help us with this, because we do need someone to help us with, you know, get through this. I'm just grateful they did that. And have you had a chance to look at our website? We have all the information on the website, and it's highlighted so that hopefully people will look at it, navigate through it.
And thank you so much for sharing it there. We really appreciate that.
We do. Thank you.
Well, Lisa Moore is our webmaster council member, and she did a great job putting it together and putting a pretty cool icon so that people will see it. And what else did I want to say? Oh. Let's see. You're going to let us know about public input, what kind of public input we're hearing, right?
Yeah, we'll have to report to you on Friday from the survey, and then we'll continue to update those results, you know, periodically until we close out that survey.
Okay, very good.
And I was going to say, on our, on the framework that's on our website, we have included starting at about page twenty one through thirty four, we have an aggregation of Johnson County's internal funding needs assessment. And these were projects and ideas that were put forth from our department heads, elected officials and staff that, and they're broken out by expenditure category. So I would encourage the council to take a look for maybe some possible ideas to see the ways in which we're interpreting Johnson County eligible use through the US Treasury's expenditure categories. And if anything there strikes a chord as maybe something University Heights would want to collaborate on or or if it gives you an idea of something, maybe a way that that your city could use funding in a similar manner. We'd be happy to obviously share any information we have. And and I just wanted to, because I know this is all kind of abstract, so sometimes seeing a list of actual tangible projects might help people understand the the many ways in which this funding can be invested for long-term economic recovery and opportunity.
Yes, and we're in regular communication with some of the other jurisdictions, especially the city of Iowa City. So that's also an opportunity for collaboration.
Any more questions? Allison Wells and Donna Brooks, and I'm sorry, I can't remember Ray's last name.
Ray Forsythe.
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Okay, thanks so much for attending tonight.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate the open communication.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. Have a good night.
You too. Now we'll go on to. Well, we're just about right on time with I'm On presentation. They wanted to be on around seven thirty. And so we have Mike and was the other one?
Scott.
Scott, I'm sorry, Scott. Mike and Scott. So would you want to, one of you want to go ahead and start? Thank you.
Ty, if you could bring up the map, I think that's probably for the council. First of all, thank you very much. This is Scott. Thank you for allowing us to put this proposal in front of you.
Let me jump to that spot, then I'll bring it back up.
While Josiah is doing that, I'll give you a little background as to what we're doing. I'm on communications, serves primarily three markets. The Cedar Rapids metro area, which is Cedar Rapids, Marion, Hiawatha. The Iowa City metro area, which is Iowa City, Corville and University Heights in the Dubuque metro. We've made a decision to build out all of those three marketplaces in the next few years. We are starting primarily with Iowa City. So we're building, we call them cabinets. You would refer to them as neighborhoods. One cabinet serves four hundred and thirty two residencies residences. So it's, some people call them fiber hoods, some people call them neighborhoods, we call them cabinets. Interesting enough, University Heights is about the right size for one cabinet. There's three hundred and ninety two residents, so you fit nicely into one cabinet. We're building eight cabinets this fall in Iowa City. We'll build the remaining twenty eighth in Iowa City next spring, summer, fall. We're building four in Corville. We'll build out the remainder of Corville as well. So we are designing and building this infrastructure of fiber to the home for a number of reasons. Number one, it it it's the right thing to do and it's in such high demand. And the marketplace is asking for it. In our design, one of the things that we we sort of had you surrounded on on the university or excuse me, on the Iowa City side. And we'd like to make a proposal that we would like to, with your permission, build out University Heights Fiber to the Home. You see the map in 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 front of you. I have to look at the key. I think the dotted. Josiah, can you go down a bit and and show me the key? Because I think the dot, there you go, the dotted is underground. That's what I thought. The dotted would be underground infrastructure, proposed underground in the blue would be proposed aerial. And why that's proposed is that's where the right of ways suggest, whether it's underground or above ground. And we would, we would look to build this out with your permission sometime next spring, summer or fall. So sometime in the build season of twenty two. As you might imagine, due to Iowa winters, our build season starts April one and sort of ends November one, depending depending on Mother Nature, I guess, but it's about eight months long. So sometime in that spring, summer, fall, we would build out this infrastructure with with your permission. Questions?
About how long does that build out take?
Good question. So each of these cabinets take about forty five days in its entirety to build. If it were all aerial, it would take three weeks. If it were all underground, it would take two months. Most of them are a combination of underground and aerial and thirty to forty five days is pretty typical to 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 build this out. We do all the things that we should do, such as send out mail to everyone saying we're coming into your neighborhood. We do door tags. We do as much pre-information so people know who these folks in the white trucks with the I'm On vests, who they are and why are they in my right of way? What are they doing in my yard? We it's, we go overboard in trying to communicate that. You still have people who who aren't sure why we're there or who we are, but but we do a real good job of trying to tell them who we are and what we're doing.
Do you have a sense of what your pricing would be for your plans? I assume you're going to be competitive or better than MediaCom as a competitor. I think it'd be nice if you do have a sense of that to be able to tell community members that, you know, you're putting up a little construction, but you're going to have another choice that's going to be competitive, you know, in terms of pricing.
Nicholas, all that information would be available on our website. You can go to the imon.net website and see our pricing across our inter our enterprise. So that information needs to and is publicly available.
The other thing, thank you. The other thing I would say is, you know, like on Melrose, we're going to have some utility poles buried, is my understanding, or some lines buried due to our streetscape project. So that might be something to put on your radar. Louise, you know the timeline for that better than I do.
Well, it, I mean, we're talking about twenty three. But it could be pushed to twenty four. I mean, you know, it could be twenty two, you know, starting planning could be twenty two or twenty three. Construction may be twenty four. I don't know. I mean, that's got to be discussed more.
So would you just put those on the poles, even if it might be buried in a couple of years, or would you bury those?
Any discussion around that is good discussion. So I'll give you an example. We're building out all of all of Iowa City next year, but they're doing a Court Street reconstruction. So for us to put in underground and to have them tear it out, yeah, it's not like, oh, that great. So we're delaying that to the end of the end of the build season to allow them to do what they're going to do. We're actually going to do joint buries. When they, when they go in and do their underground, we're going to go with them. So we do joint buries. It's good use of utilities. It's smart. So any conversation or construction or information you have like that would help us because the last thing a utility wants to do, this is extremely expensive enterprise to to do this. So to put it in and have it torn out is not high on the list. So we appreciate that that input.
Can you build the cabinet and then delay that area, or do you have to delay the entire cabinet?
We would build a cabinet, okay, and we can light up or pu- put fiber, light fiber to the areas that are unaffected by the construction. There is some contiguous flow to it because we do access rings. So we have, we always have redundancy, et cetera, with fiber. So it's maybe not as straightforward an answer a- as you would like, but yes, we could do all but one street or do all but one area. It's it's not, we seldom would delay the whole, the whole cabinet because it would just be. You know, once you're in there, people want your, once you're in there, people want your service. So to go in there and not provide service, you kind of have to unless there's something else going on.
And and if I could add too, Nicholas, we usually have a person outside every day during the project. And that person usually works closely with your streets guy, your engineer. And we let, we let the municipalities know every day where we're going to be. So if the citizens call in, you know where we're at and what's going on.
Okay. But so to be clear, we, the people could look at pricing now and you expect it to be uniform regardless of the area? You don't expect it to change probably a whole lot over the next few years?
We really don't. It's, it's really, you know, it, we've become such a utility that it's so market driven and it is so regulated that there are, you know, like you might expect occasionally you get a, you know, new customer, you know, incentive or something, but the the pricing is pretty uniform. And what you see on our website i- is is pretty standard and is going to be probably the best direction you could provide anybody for what pricing is is going to be.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very, it's very competitive and it it's different. I mean, we, we have, so I'll say I live in Cedar Rapids and I'm in a MediaCom area. I am not in Iman's footprint. I hope to change that. So I don't get fiber to to the home and it is such a different surprise. For those that get fiber to the home, you have dedicated service. So what you buy is what you get. I'm in a shared node situation, so in an evening like tonight, I'm concerned about this because if everybody's home streaming, I may go away. Whereas when it's so, a fiber to the home enterprise is significantly different. And we run copper as well. We have HFC as well in Cedar Rapids. So we're by no means throwing rocks. We're just saying fiber to the home is a much better solution.
Will it be available for businesses as well? Will they be able to get service through this too?
Abs- absolutely, sir. And and usually what what we do is separate business build. So as you see on the map, the the rings and where where all the the access rings will run, any fiber, any business in there, then what you do is you go from the street and you work with the business to where do they want to enter the business? And you do an underground from the street to their business. So yes, businesses e- even more attractive than residential because as you imagine, they they use more bandwidth. So they're a really good customer.
Scott, this is the, do you, how do you install it? Is it like underground direct bury or is it underground directional boring?
Mike, you want to?
Yeah, sure.
I know this is your area.
Yep. So anything buried is is placed in conduits. We place conduit first, pull the fiber back through it.
Yeah.
If if the utilities are already buried and if it's aerial, we just go aerial.
Okay.
Anything buried would generally be directional bored typically to the backyard easements. They do a, would have what they call a missile crew and it's, they bore short shots and hand digs. They try to avoid all the other private utilities back there, sprinkler systems, that kind of thing.
Okay. I I assume that there'll be somebody laying out phone lines and stuff in the ground already so we don't run over anybody else's equipment.
We 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 sure hope so. USIC is 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 one of our partners and we don't take step one until we have locates because to do one good thing and one bad thing, you get remembered for the bad thing. So you never want to cut anybody's phone line or do anything. We're, we're, we have USIC and locates work ahead of us. So we always know where where we're, where we're boring, where we're digging, even aerial. Because then you got to come down the pole and get to the house and those kind of things. So locates are a very key part of what what we do. We don't do locates, of course, USIC does. But but yes, Doug, that's paramount to the business we're in.
Okay, very good.
Scott or Mike, this is Josiah. Could you talk a little bit about the cabinets that are required for this work?
We, we, we can't.
I'm sorry, not the cabinets, but the pedestals.
The the pads. So what a cabinet is, for all practical purposes, is the center of the neighborhood. It feeds the, all of the residences from a cabinet, which for lack of a better explanation, it looks like about a half size of the old traditional mailbox. It looks kind of like a mailbox and that's the center of your neighborhood or your cabinet. And as it feeds down the streets, there are little green nodes that stick up that we call pedestals. And they're either in the front yard right of way or in the backyard right of way. They feed to the pedestals and then from the pedestals underground to the house. So the residents will see little green nodes, front yard or backyard, depending on where their right of way is. And that's part of what what utilities like ours do. That's how they locate front yard or backyard and then to the home. I'm sure you've seen a million of these things. And they, they're green, they they're, you know, they're by no means things of beauty, but they're making them better and better and better so that they're, you know, they they blend in with, you know, with the the structure.
They're, they're very similar in size to like CenturyLink's green boxes, all kind of things, eight by eight, eight by eight inches wide, roughly waist high.
Does there, is there one pedestal per property?
No, depending on whether it's front easement or rear easement. If it's front easement, there's one pedestal for two residences. And if it's rear easement, there's one pedestal for four residences.
Do those get installed as part of this build out or when somebody signs up for service?
Usually they get installed during the build. And then whether they get, whether they go from the pedestal to the home is when someone signs up for for services. But the pedestals are there. They may not be activated. They may not be live if that resident doesn't sign up for service. But the infrastructure is there such that if they do later, it's just a matter of opening the pedestal and doing, doing what needs to be done. And then there has, of course, has to be a bury from the pedestal to the house in order to get service to the house. So if you sign up for service, someone's going to come down your street. Either way, someone's going to come down your street and build that infrastructure. But only if you sign up for service do they go from the pedestal to your house. If you don't, they they don't do that.
So they bury from the pedestal to to your house and do they, is there a charge for that to the?
Not, not, not to the homeowner. We, of course, pay for that as part of our build fee. But our our only fees are monthly service fees.
Yeah, historically, they meet with the homeowner and they they walk out the property to make sure it's wherever he wants it to be.
And again, it also has to be located because there are sprinkler systems and utilities, et cetera, on people's properties. So it it must be located as well. It has to be between twelve and eighteen inches underground, no more than eighteen, no less than twelve. There's just a lot of special circumstances for what these, we call them drop berries, have to be from the pedestal to the house.
Does this map show where they'd be like a front or a back? Is this green?
No, no, they don't. This shows aerial being green and underground being red. We'd have to actually get a build right of way map to look at whether your right of ways are front of road or back, back of of road. And we'd have to look at that, but this, this allows us to look at where the, our infrastructure would go. You can see in some of them where they're front and some of them where they're back because you can see where the green goes. So you can see where the green goes through the backyards, it's rear, it's rear access. So you can see some of them, but it won't show, I think your question was where will it go from the pad to the home or was that the question?
I just wondered if this map that green helps show where they'd run, whether it be front or back because golf you looks like they'd be on the front. Run whether it be front or back because golf you looks like they'd be on the front. Of one side of the street. I don't know. You know what I mean? I'm looking at golf view and then I look at. Other streets and it looks like it's behind.
Yeah, if it runs, if it runs down the middle. Of the back, that's where your right of way is. So it would suggest your right away is back of yard. If it's front like Melrose, it shows that it, you know, it's front up and down Melrose. It's it's the right on the street.
So like every other house, because what you need in the front, you need two houses gets one. So there'd be this and you said it's eighteen inches high. I know it goes under the ground eighteen inches, but it's higher than that, right?
It's about, it's about this high. It's about eighteen inches. It's a little green. Node that sticks out. After our conversation, when you drive around tomorrow, look for them and you'll see them everywhere. But they're little green plastic nodes that we call pedestals.
There's a picture on the website that shows on my.
Oh yeah, that's great. Thank you. Whoever who did that Lisa, is that Lisa? Thank you. There is a, I forget.
I thought they were white.
No, they're green. Um, okay. Yeah, they they're trying to make them blend in as much as possible.
These are not blue like our garbage and recycling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, source.
Interesting. My neighborhood was built in the mid nineties, nineteen ninety seven. Our access is mid house. So not front yard, not backyard, mid house, which is the oddest thing in the world. So all of the utilities have to run from the backyard to the mid house or from the front yard to mid house. It's just terrible. I don't know. I don't think they've done it any other place, but it was maybe a thing they tried in the mid nineties, but. It it causes fit. So now every now every house has to have a pedestal.
Well, this all sounds great. My only last comments, I guess, is, you know, Josiah, I, as it relates to the. Future barrel of any over overhead utilities that's in the works or maybe in the works in the future. I feel like. Definitely Melrose, Josiah would be the one to talk to, you know, personally, I want to bury everything I can just to. You know, if we can get the overhead lines out of sight, you don't have to worry about trees and derageo and and they're just unsightly, but. Um, but yeah, if if there's been any conversations, I'm sure Josiah will keep you in the loop on that. And. I knew I feel like there has been other rumblings, maybe a burying sunset. Um, potentially from Mid American or something. I don't know if that's a, if I just made that up in my head, maybe just wishful thinking, but. Um. But but yeah, I think Josiah would keep you connected on that.
It's very good. We we obviously have to work closely with that. With the city engineering crew because what we do has to be in sync with what needs to be done from the city. We. We we can't make our own rules. We have to follow where the right away is, whether it's underground or aerial, et cetera.
I don't think you're going to be getting a Christmas card from MediaCom this year.
Well. I don't know. Well, probably this year, maybe not next year. Um, because all of this build will be in twenty two for for Iowa City. Corville and with your permission, University Heights, it will start around April and you'll be somewhere between April and November. Um, some forty five day. We and we build them. So I know it's one cabinet for University Heights, but like for Iowa City, we'll build in blocks. So like we're building an eight. Neighborhood block right now. We're building eight cabinets in the next three months. So it's one block. So it keeps all your contractors, construction, street, et cetera, all in one neighborhood. As opposed to scattered around the city.
I'm glad to see you getting the jump on it. I'm I'm really all for this. So. Kudos to you guys for doing this.
Doug, I am, I am too, and I'm I'm kind of waiting to get into the footprint myself. I will tell you that I froze right in the middle of my board presentation. We were presenting to the board a couple of weeks ago. And my internet froze and it's like, okay, I can't wait to get into this fiber. So at least I have dedicated service.
Josiah had reported that you needed a verbal. Uh, confirmation from the majority of the council to move forward. What do you, what what did you? What did you need and what's your next steps?
We we appreciate that. We obviously can't do this without without your permission. These are. Right aways that are monitored and owned by the city. So a verbal would allow us to move forward. When I say move forward. We would continue with the design work, okay? And then we would ask you to send us something in a response to our expansion letter. We sent an expansion letter asking for permission to do this. Just a response back saying, yes, the council voted and approved this would be enough for us. Uh, to move forward with something written.
Okay, then this will move forward with the design.
Correct.
And then uh, and then you're going to come back and show the design. What do you, what what happens after that?
Well, I mean, it we 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 need written approval with this. Well, your verbal approval will help us move forward with the design. And it's really more of a a formality to a little bit to what Nicholas talked about and others. The design just has to be in sync with what the city. We we can't go underground when it's aerial. We can't go aerial when it's underground. It just has to be in sync. So the city comes back and says, yes. Um, th- this is is we're in sync with this design and and then that's what we build. And then you get as built. So when we're all done, we will send you a map of. What we said we would build and what we built. So you have some sort of record for the city of what was actually done.
Okay, so um.
Mayor, this is Josiah. Also, I'll just jump in real quick. So what I what I'm anticipating here in my discussions with Scott. Is that they they will essentially move forward with their design uh into the specifics and the details of, you know, all the questions that we talked about tonight. Um, including like where's the where's the cabinet hub going to sit? Um, which parts of these projects need to be overhead, underground, based on future street projects? So all those details and ultimately they're going to. Pick up those comments and refine that design. Um, and this will go back to us for review and we'll end up issuing a permit. Oh, like a a a work in the right away permit, just like we would do for any other utility. And that that would be the ultimate um. Approval for them to proceed with construction is when they get that permit.
Okay, Steve, should we have a motion to pro- to proceed or not to proceed with the design with Iman?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
Can I, Louise, can I ask one question first?
Absolutely.
Sorry, I just want to confirm there there's no cost to the city to do this, right? Like this is, we're giving you approval. To build in the city, but there's not a cost to the city to do this. Is that right?
Correct. There's no, there's no cost to the city to do this. There is a substantial cost to. The service provider and it's why we want to make sure that permission is granted and. The high level, mid level, low level designs are approved because once you build, it's 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 a costly infrastructure bill.
Any other questions? Um, would someone like to make a motion?
A motion.
Okay, motion for uh, the design approval. Is there a second? Second by Doug?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Did I hear everyone?
You didn't hear Lisa.
Yes, okay, five zero. Okay, council votes to move forward with the design. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
And you communicate with Josiah and he'll get back to us.
We will. The the next is we're, what you see is a high level design. So it shows our infrastructure. We go down a next level to mid level, which will get cabinet approval to low level, which. Shows the poles. It shows everything in more detail than you'd ever want to know. And that's what we provide to our construction to build. And we we will, of course, you you know, ask for you to overview and and agree to our low level design. And then that's what we build.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We will exit from your meeting, but thank you for allowing us to be part of it.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Bye.
Josiah, while we're here under engineer, why don't we go ahead and do um. And go through your report and what Doug has right now?
Sounds good. Um. Let's hit the panel replacements quotations that we received yesterday. So the the current fiscal year budget had funds um. Approved for street panel replacements on Cozier and Mahaska. We issued those for competitive quotation because um. Again, the estimated cost was below the the bid threshold that Steve Kuhl had mentioned earlier. So we sent those to seven basically street contractors that do the do that work. And have worked in University Heights and Iowa City and North Liberty. We received two quotations yesterday. Uh, the low quote was received from All American Concrete. Let me jump to that. The their quotation was forty thousand eight hundred twenty four dollars and zero cents. Uh, our estimate of the work was forty eight, three, so they were below the estimate.
Great.
Um. Our recommendation is to award that that work to All American. And then we have, we have a resolution twenty one thirty seven.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Doug. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. I'm sorry, I heard Lisa first and. And they must be. Is there um further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. So we will uh. Notify them tomorrow and get their their documents to them and and start that process. The contract has them completing that work by the end of November this fall. Um, other miscellaneous items, um. So yes, uh, Min America, you probably read this in my in my engineering report. Mid American Energy is going to be burying some runs of overhead wires. Uh, in the in the, I guess I call it the north neighborhood, north of Grand Avenue. Um, they initially, this was work to facilitate tree limb removal because they were having issues with the tree canopy conflicts at several properties back there. And as they got into that and started figuring out how that was going to work, they they. Opened up the scope, I guess, of this project. And so now they're going to do underground. Um, underground conduit and install their electrical wires in that underground conduit on portions of Sunset Street. Uh, Prospect and um. Uh, Glen Crest. And create a create basically a loop. Uh, they have, they have service lines on golf view and then they have a dead end basically on that. Sunset area. And so they're going to create a loop that will also provide better reliability for them um to to backfeed in case they have outages. And that that work is planned to occur this fall. Um, the one thing I would note about that, I believe that I believe that the poles are still going to stay, at least for now. Um, there are secondary. I think they're called secondary services on those poles. So Mid American has their electric lines, but then below them there are like MediaCom. Um, Century Link has has wires on those. So. My understanding, the last time I talked to Mid American is they'll they'll go underground and they'll actually cut down those poles from whatever height they are down to a shorter pole. Um, and then the the underbuild, the the media comms, the telecommunications will can stay on there until until they relocate as well.
Okay, any questions for Josiah? Did you have some other things, Josiah?
I did want to follow up. I I found out today, so it wasn't in my report. Um. We had had an issue with several of the pedestrian streetlights down on Melrose around the restaurant staying on twenty four hours a day.
Oh, yes.
Um, so we do have, we do have an electrical contractor. They're supposed to be there tomorrow to. Replace the photo cells on the pad on the pad poles. Uh, so hopefully that will correct that issue.
Thanks to your assistant, Paul Moore, for letting us know that.
Yep.
Your right hand man.
Uh, so yeah, that was my other item.
Thank you. Doug, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, not really. I'm still working on a few uh people that are not really complying with the. Vegetation hanging out over sidewalks. So I'm going to have to give them another visit yet, but that's really all I have.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh, we'll go back to, now we're going to save legal report for the very end. And we're going to go back to city clerk report and Mike, you uh. Sent a clerk report.
Right, I I really don't have anything to add to that. Um. Yeah, Greg Stil- Greg Stilner is work trying to join in. I approved him out of the waiting room, but I haven't seen him show up yet, so.
Okay. And then we'll go to the city treasure report and payment of the bills. Uh, the. Warrants were circulated in the finance report. Are there any additions to the bills that anyone knows? Are there any objections to pay in the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. We'll go down to police chief committee report. Uh, chief sent around a report. Today, did you add it, want to add anything, chief?
I would just point out item, I'm not sure what it is because I corrected my numbering, but the Cadence Sports kickoff to Kennick Street Run. Uh, that's a five K scheduled for October second. That's going to cause some frustrations. Uh, but they'll be relatively minor. They've held this in the past and we can make it happen. And then item number H, the two legacy patrol vehicles that have been sitting in the lot for the last two years. One of them sold this last month and I'm confident. The remaining one will sell in the next month.
Okay, any questions for chief? Sarah, did you want to add anything?
No, thanks.
Um, I want to thank Troy for attending the Guidelink meeting as my alternate today. Thank you so much. Um, also. We'll go down to. Uh, building zoning and sanitation. And Steve talked about this in his report, but I know Troy's aware of, or Troy, I know Nick's aware of it. Can uh. Nick, would you like to speak about it or Steve? It's uh, the property next to. One one five. That's been for sale for several years. Now it's with a realtor, is my understanding, and they want an address to list it.
Yeah, I think that's right. Uh, this is the property uh that's kind of down the hill uh. When you make the curve on Highland Drive, it's the the property where the guy wanted to build the Kennick House. Anyway, um, I think that the people that own that uh want to sell the lot and um and then they were just trying to navigate. Uh, people to the address and then they they found that the lot itself didn't have an address. For the longest time, that lot was owned by the people that own the lot immediately to the north where Stephanie and Josh gone now live. But. Anyway, uh, plus the factor was, there's never been a house there. So there was never an address. So. So they scrolled around and contacted Nick as the chair of the zoning uh zoning uh committee and um. Uh, bottom line is it's up to the city to assign an address and. For the reasons that I set forth in in my report after talking with Josiah and Terry Gert and. Uh, some other people looking at the maps, it made sense to call it one oh one Highland Drive. So that's what uh. That's what resolution twenty one thirty nine does. It just. Uh, adopts that as the address for that lot and then instructs city staff to to send that notice out to. You know, joint emergency communication, fire departments and other people that are listed on exhibit A.
I appreciate you working on this, Steve, because there didn't seem to be a model for what exactly is done at an address. I think this is a good model. For the future. Um, and I like the exhibit A too in terms of who's to be notified. Um, do you know, is it was something like this done when like O U P was constructed and? You know, I don't know if that's something that has been updated. And, you know, I don't know if that's something that has been updated as additional, obviously, business addresses have been put in and that sort of thing. Do you know, Steve or Louise?
Well, the church had an address. Wasn't it thirteen hundred, you know, and so I think it just continued from the church's address because we're thirteen oh two. You know, I think it came from, is that right, Steve?
Generally, I mean, certainly it's true that the church had an address and the OUP addresses sort of spun off from that general location. But I think, Nick, if we went back and looked at the condominium declarations, I think that that's where individual property addresses were actually designated. And then as part of the approval process by the council, I think that's where the council ratified those addresses. But in that situation, it was probably more the condominium developers that coordinated with, like the post office in terms of, is this an okay address with you and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think it might be something that by chance Bobby and I, I think would be the two businesses at issue in the sense that, you know, thirteen, ten and a half for Sidekick was added. And Bobby, I don't know if you're adding an address for your space, but yeah, so that might be something that is, I don't want to talk in a conflicted way, obviously, in terms of an outcome, but I think it's an issue that potentially impacts Bobby and myself.
Well, and it could be others as well, as you know. I guess maybe a good response, Nick, would be that if there's a perceived need for the city to look into present addresses and, you know, like I talked about the Joint Emergency Communications Center. Does Jack know what Sidekick's address is? Or is that just something that somebody put up and the postal carrier knows to deliver mail there? I don't really know the answer to that. It'd be pretty easy to find out, I think.
Bobby, were you going to say something? I see you unmuted, so I don't want to speak over.
Oh, no, I mean, I was just going to say, yeah, I just, I kind of, it simply followed suit. I mean, my neighbor had the address, you know, thirteen oh six, and I just tacked on thirteen oh six and a half because I think that's what you guys had done. It was pretty informal. I registered with the post office, I think, and I mean, that's about it. Yeah, it was all kind of surprising how, I don't know how that works.
I appreciate that feedback.
Nick, did you want the city to look into that?
Well, yeah, I don't know. Tell me, Steve, if this isn't the right time to say that, but it probably would make sense to, I guess, ratify those two or have a similar resolution unless there is a more systematic way to double-check, you know, Grand View, OUP. You know, I don't know, in terms of the hotel, I assume they just have the one, you know, one address and that's probably part of the documents. Yeah, so if you see issues spotting, I'd be all ears in terms of, you know, how to most efficiently just kind of spread the word in terms of the new addresses in town.
Yeah, why don't I take a peek at that and get back to the council with what I found and a recommendation for doing what we need to do.
Thank you. And I have nothing further.
Okay, so we have Resolution twenty-one thirty-nine. Are you making a motion? Motion by Nick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mo Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott? Swales? Herbald?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. We'll go to eGovernment. And Lisa, you sent in a report. And then you also sent me kind of a reminder about Halloween. And our meeting is October 12th, but it might be nice to set, I think that was a good idea to set times for Halloween, October 31st, which is a Sunday evening. We usually, last year you sent me was five-thirty to eight for trick or treat. Does that, should it be longer, shorter? Anyone?
Five-thirty to eight PM is what Iowa City does. Not that we have to do what Iowa City does, but.
Yeah.
Some of you have kids, so.
I would say keep it the same because then nobody gets confused. But I don't see any to change it.
Okay. There's one mom council member there. Does that seem agreeable to the rest of the council to keep it five-thirty to eight?
I think so. It kind of is a good, you know, in terms of when it gets dark, it seems like it's a good mix of starting early enough for maybe little kids who are wanting to get out early, but also allowing it to go into the dark hours and not too late for people who want to not have their door knocked on too late at night. So makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I think it works real well. You just turn off your lights if you're done, or a little earlier. But, okay, that sounds, so is that agreeable with Doug and Bobby?
Very good, very good.
Okay, go ahead with that. Lisa, did you want to add anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Did Greg get on?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we'll go down to, I would go to the legal report. And Steve updated the legal report this afternoon, but Steve, so.
Hang on just a minute, Louise, because I think, I think Greg dropped out again. He's coming back in. And Jim, Jim Glasgow should be coming in just now too.
I can't hear you.
I'm here. Couldn't get my computer to work for some reason.
Oh, well, there you are. Okay. Steve, you want to give a little introduction of where we are now? I mean, it's in that last report. Did everyone get to see the last report? I think there were just punch lists. We're talking about the hotel punch list that was to be finished by September 1st.
Right, exactly right. So I tried to trace a little of the history in my report. Just to summarize, the hotel was getting ready to open earlier in the summer as with any, really any construction project. And there's people on this call, on this meeting on Zoom who know a whole lot more about construction projects than I do, but I've been around a few. There's always things that need tidied up and buttoned up. And we did this with OUP, we did it with Grand View Court, and we did it with Burke Dale Court. And, you know, you end up with the list. And in June, or May, excuse me, late May, the council went ahead and authorized the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, which lets the hotel open. In the hotel's case, it let guests stay there and people serve food and what, you know, the normal operations of a hotel. In the case of OUP, it let businesses occupy and residents, so forth. So occupancy isn't, you know, limited to residents is what I'm trying to get at. But anyway, at that point then, we, the city staff, Terry Gert, the building official, our building official, Josiah, bills kemper, city engineer, and me as the city attorney, together with input from various council members, police chief, other service providers, you know, sort of take a look at everything and what remains to be completed. And our source documents for that were several, but there were various approvals over the last, I would say, four years with respect to the hotel development. There was a PUD plan application and then that was amended. There was a PUD development application that was amended, zoning ordinances, the zoning ordinance was amended, and several resolutions along the way. And so we've just sort of tried to gather up everything that has been done, which, you know, if we made a list of that, I don't know if I have enough computer space, you know. It's a big project, is my point. So we get down to the list of, okay, these things haven't been accomplished. And then the developer whittles away at those and keeps whittling away. And that's why I sent my updated report this afternoon because several things even since Sunday have been completed. And so those are off the list now and we're left with several items that remain. And so with regard to those, again, you know, city staff, Josiah, myself, and city officials, the mayor in particular, have, I think jointly at times and individually at times, talked with the developers about where they are on some of these things. And the developers are here, I think, to talk to the council. I won't speak for them, but there's some items on the list that remain that I think the developers, Greg and Jim, are going to ask the council to forgive, just to say that those don't need to be done. And I think they'll explain why. And there's other things that the council may want to say and the developers may want to say, well, look, we just need a little more time to get that done or whatever amount of time. That's really what brings us to the point tonight. The council has the discretion, and I think I made that point in my report, but the council has the discretion to accept the project as it is or require a little more time or allow a little more time for some things, but not others. So that flexibility made it somewhat difficult for me to prepare documents for the council to actually consider and take action upon tonight because I don't know what direction the council wants to go. So the document that I did prepare sort of says, we're going to revisit this in, you know, you pick a date, the November meeting or a special meeting, I'm sorry, October meeting, forgot a month. Or at some point, then I can bring back one or more documents to sort of put into into play or into effect what the council's direction is tonight after hearing from Greg Stiltner and Jim Glasgow with respect to these remaining items and city staff as well in terms of our input, if you have questions. So that would be my introduction.
Thank you. So Greg or Jim, would you like to speak to the council about these items?
Greg, are you going?
Oh, here we go. Sorry. I got you, sorry. I had you guys on mute. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, there, if you guys want to go through the items, we can. I think Jim and I will ask the city council, if possible, to eliminate or omit some of these items, if possible. And we can basically give you some ideas of why we would like to do that. If we want to start at the very first one, number six, item six, the landscaping plan, there was a, Josiah figured it out. Yesterday, we've been going back and forth a little bit with the general contractor of the original landscaping plan somehow got changed to where it looked as if the general contractor said, was telling me that the trees and the plants were existing. And Josiah said that they are new. And the general contractor says, well, we took those as existing. Josiah hit it back and said, no, they're new. And so I was waiting on that kind of, the general contractor to kind of give up. And then Josiah proved it, that there was two different prints and the prints got changed in the mix. So I guess where I'm at with that at this point is we need to put some plants and trees on the west side. I don't know if the city council is wanting to require me to do that. I think we're good with where we're at as far as landscaping goes. I think the property looks great. We have several trees. So I guess what I would ask on that particular one, if the city council would think that that's sufficient enough, and if so, then we would amend or eliminate the requirement moving forward on those trees and plants. So I guess on that particular item, I guess what I'm hoping that we can do is say that the landscaping is okay with the city council as it is, so.
Well, can I just interject there? We have a row of trees along the west border. And those are these forty to sixty-foot tall spruce trees. There's probably twenty of them. And those are what we're talking about. I mean, those are the existing trees that are there. And if we put more, well, I guess we're putting more in front of those or something. That's kind of the question is whether we really need to do that based on the number of trees we have there already.
So I've been down there. I haven't walked that particular part of the property. Some of those trees look like they were or they already were limbed up. And I remember the discussion, although I think it was in the, in 2017 when I was not on council, but there was quite a bit of discussion of a buffer on that west side between, that would benefit both the hotel and the houses there on Olive Court that back onto the property. So it would be a buffer for sound, a buffer for light. It's, looks like, like I said, I haven't gone down there and specifically checked this out, but it looks like there would still need to be some sort of planting. But at this point, I don't know what plant material would be the most appropriate. And I don't know what plant material would be available at this point in the fall. So this, I mean, depending on what other council members think, this might be something that would be.
From what I was reading, from what I was reading, it was arborvitas, Lisa, is what, that's what, that's what they were talking about, some arborvita. I don't know how good that's going to look in that particular area. We do have twenty-foot of green space there and then the tree buffer is very much to the west of that. So, and you also got to remember it's raised up about four or five feet. So it's kind of, it's kind of hard to see from the street level or from the sidewalk level. You don't really see back in there. It's just, it's just an open space between that and those spruce trees.
We have the same memory as Lisa in terms of that being a buffer that was anticipated. I wouldn't be ready tonight to say that we're just going to let it go. I think that, you know, like Lisa said, I'd have to go down there with the eye of exactly, you know, what was agreed to and then what's being requested to not do. That'd be my position on this point.
This is Josiah. So just to clarify, what, I guess first I would say, yeah, I agree with your recollections that, you know, there was quite a bit of discussion about that west boundary line and landscaping it as a buffer to the neighborhood, primarily for the neighborhood to the hotel. So what we're looking at is, we've got about nine trees in there, three deciduous trees and six white pines that are not there currently, and then roughly forty different shrubs or, I guess, flowering shrubs. There's some arborvita, there's some fragrant sumac and some viburnum in there. So as of right now, there's, again, roughly nine trees and forty shrubs that if they're not in there, that. A- as of right now, there's, there's again roughly nine trees and forty shrubs that uh, if they're not in there, that, there'd be nothing in there, except for the existing trees.
So Josiah, you're saying that that's within the plan? What you just described is what's in the landscaping plan? But it's not there yet, right?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in the landscaping plan. Um, and, and it would have been done. It would have been part of the landscaping uh, bid from the subcontractor, the landscaping contractors, just somehow. The, the designation or the, the name of the tree got taken out and the. And the general contractor and the subcontractor. Thought it was, you know, they assumed it was existing. I don't know how that happened. Um, very frustrating for me because it puts me in this position because otherwise it would have been on the landscaping plan and bid like all the other. Subcontractors. Um, so at this, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm more than happy to uh. Uh, show, we walked the lot with, with the city council members to, to see um. What they would like to have there. Um, we'll, we'll put in. What's, you know, shown on the plan. If need be, um, that's not a problem. Um, I just, it, where it sits so high up, you know, at that one end on the very southeast end, it's like six foot tall. From our parking lot and, and there's, you know, like Jim saying, there's quite a few, few trees there already. So. I guess it's one of those things we just have to look at and uh, and. And make a, make some, you know, plans to do so. So as far as the smaller, how, Josiah, do you know how the arborvita, how tall those are at all?
Uh, it says they're twenty-five by ten. Here on the plant list. Oh, yeah. My only other suggestion with that would be um, you know, if, if it's appropriate, you could go back to the landscape architect, which I think was Hawks Design, if I remember right. And ask them to uh, take a look at it, you know? Not when it used to be a uh, a two D image on a plant, on a sheet, but in real life, and maybe they would. Have a suggestion for a change or, or something different.
Yeah, that, that space up there is um, somewhat of a dead space. There's, basically it's between two fences now. And we try to mow it. That's, that's the other. The other, you know, the maintenance on it. If um, trying to mow it, we, it's easy to mow at this point with, you know, not a lot of stuff in the way, but. It's just an observation. But we can look at it. I'm, I'm more than willing to do a field trip and have everybody look at it and see what everybody wants to do. I'm. Good with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, well, I guess, and that's fine. I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, so what exactly, Josiah, what? What is your feedback, I guess, on why, what reasons, if any? We wouldn't do just exactly what is part of the plan?
I think the property looks great as is. I think the, the um.
I was wondering if Josiah, what Josiah's feedback was on that.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, I, I think they could do exactly what's on the plan. I, I just didn't know if uh. I think Lisa mentioned something about whether, like what's available at this point. Um. And so I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, saying. This is a, a quality substitution for, you know, this plant or that plant. But for, you know, if you went back to the landscape architect, they may. Say, well, now that I see it, um, and, and based on what's available, I would recommend, you know, swap this for that, that sort of thing. So. That was my only um, reason for that comment.
That's good feedback. Thank you.
So it sounds like maybe a landscape architect should come. You know, and look at it.
They're good idea.
As Nick and Josiah suggested. That, what do you call it? Hawksy? I don't know.
Oh, yeah, Hawks. Well, wouldn't, to, to me, it'd be just easier. Let's just go with what's on the plan. We'll just do that. I mean, the, it's, you're talking about bushes and shrubs and it's, this, this is a good time of year to plant all that stuff right now. So. Fall's, fall's coming and shouldn't be a problem at all. It's just if we can get the plant material.
I've been waiting for six months for my planting, so.
I know there's.
They're supposed to come in October, but they said it could be spring. Okay.
Yeah, there, there is a shortage.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get that with availability. I think though, this is something, if, if we can be ready to. If you can't just do it by next meeting, I think my request and see what the rest of the council says is that we just. Check in at that time, um, at least on this issue. It's number six and see, yeah, what you found out. And if you've done it and complied and checked it off the list, I don't. I'm not going to complain about that if it's per Josiah's, you know, requirements.
Okay, I, that, that sounds good.
Okay, the next meeting is October twelfth. So the next one is lighting. Is that right?
I think the next one is the. And which one do you want to go with next, Steve?
Look, looking at them in order, I thought there was a number four first. Is that? I, I guess I was just going down the punch list and, in order. But green is, so green, so number four is incomplete, right?
So.
Steve, you're muted. I don't know if Steve is talking.
Yes, I've been talking for a while. No, uh, I, I wanted to give the, I wanted to give the council as much information as I could. Um, so that's why I gave you this kind of raw document punch list. Uh, and then of course, the council's welcome to see any parts of any of that anytime at once. Having said that. Um, yeah, uh, some of the numbers on here frankly were uh. You know, like I, I didn't, I didn't call them out in um. In uh, my report, Nick, and the reason is like, like something needs reported. Okay, well, that's easy and, and, you know, uh, that'll happen. Um, uh, you know, there's a couple of other notations that are really just for myself to double check that. And everything is where I think it is square, but, but I, I wouldn't even be in a position to ask the developers to do anything. So um, I don't think that the, yeah, the stormwater management plan, okay, that particular item, Nick. Uh, so if you read all the, the comments, Josiah had commented that. What, what's required for right now is done and in place, just like it should.
I'm fine with that. I, I'm, I can look at the more condensed one. That's, that's totally fine. I, I guess, as long as we're not. As long as we're not waving anything in the more expanded punch list, then I'm, I'm fine just looking at your more condensed one.
No, that, that was, and I, that, that was just an example of, of me. I said to Josiah, hey, the way I read your comment, we, I can just take this off for now. And then I said to him, but what's the plan for this follow-up in the future? And he got back to me and said, well, yes, it should be taken off for now. And the plan for the follow-up is we're gonna. City clerk, city attorney, city engineer, we're going to calendar a bunch of follow-ups. You know, frankly, months and years out. And so that, that's why, uh, probably better in my world. And then what you said is a good way to put it, uh, to me, Nick, absolutely not waving anything. I think it's better for, uh, I think it would be better to follow the, the legal report uh, items. Those are the ones that are, that are really sticking out there. And the next one of those would be lighting.
Lighting, yes.
Uh, so I can talk about that. Um, the lighting, so our property line. On the, I call it north, which the railroad track side. The entire sidewalk is on the railroad property. Uh, so we got that lighting. Um, over top of the sidewalk, which is very much. Spillage is on the railroad properties. There's, you know, it's a lot of spillage. So. The railroad did give us twenty-five feet of. Uh, license, uh, they call it a license of twenty-five feet to use. Um, so we lit that space because the sidewalk's on there. And then the similar. Light spillages on the south side. On the one-on-one Woodside Drive as well. So I guess on this particular item. If we could consider this one. You know. Done or um, I don't know what to do with this, I guess. Consider this one complete, I guess. Or omit it or change it in some way to. The requirements are. Satisfied.
I guess what's the outstanding ask here? It looks like they're, we're looking for a document, some documentation showing the light spillage. I mean, is that kind of what the outstanding ask is? And is that, is that something you can provide?
Well, yeah, I can. I, I don't, so I could ask the engineer to come and do it, but it's, the light is right over top of there and, and it's clearly. Um, a lot of spillage. Uh, so. I think the intent maybe of this particular item was so there was no spillage. Um, or very little spillage on two other properties. Well, this, this is a lot of spillage. So I, I, I think we kind of over. Did the, you know, what the intent of this, this item maybe. So, um. So I'm. If we got the document, it would show exactly. I don't even know, do, I don't even know who would do those. I guess I could talk to electrical engineer. Uh, to get the document. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is it, it. The document's going to show that there's a lot of spillage, so.
Josiah, could I, or sorry, sorry, you done?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I, I'm just trying to understand what the.
Yeah, with the issues.
What the outstanding task is and I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
I think Josiah, if I understand this correctly, we don't want light spillage. At least back toward the community because of. You know, just having that light pollution, I guess, going toward residents. I think I'm understanding um. Developers' comments to be that the light spillage is going toward the railroad. Is that right?
Uh, that, that's what I understand. So. I guess there, there's two, there's two lighting aspects you had in your, in your agreement and um. The one, it's measuring the light levels from the project at the boundary lines with some um, requirements that they need to be down to a certain level. Right? Just for the reasons you just stated. And then there's a second lighting um, measurement that's um, verifying that. Let me see. Uh, developer shall document that no more than two percent of the fixture lumens are emitted at an angle of ninety degrees or higher. So I think that's a matter of um. Taking some stock of all the lighting on site and verifying that. And again, that's related to not like, you know, shining lights up and out into the neighborhood and other people. Um, so yeah, so, so right now there's, there's two measurements. One is for those, those fixtures, looking at each fixture and the angle. And then the second one is measuring the light levels at the property lines and ten foot beyond the property lines. My understanding is that they will ha, they will definitely have light, more light on the railroad property. Because the railroad allowed them to put that sidewalk in over there with lights. Greg has told me that he thinks they have additional light on the south boundary. Um. The south side would be, what's the name of the street, Greg?
Woodside.
Woodside Drive. Um, and, and I don't, I don't know anything about the uh, the west boundary line. I, I'm not aware of any. Uh, I, I guess I don't know. It, it's not been measured, so I can't tell you what it is.
The, the twenty foot, there's a twenty foot buffer on that side.
Yeah. Well, and one of the reasons, one of the reasons there's extra light there was probably because of me. Because I complained early on that the sidewalks running along the railroad tracks, I couldn't see there. And we were, at the time, we were plowing snow. And so Greg actually added a light. On that side of the light post so that we could light up the sidewalk. And the same thing on the south side, we have a sidewalk that all our tenants and, and a lot of students use. Which is on the, on the outside wall. Uh, it's, it's down low. And there was no lighting there too. It was, it was, it was pretty dark. And that's on the south side of the property, which is the Woodside Drive side. And that's where um, our apartment building is. So all of this spillage, whatever you want to call it, really is lighting up the sidewalks. And to me, it's, I don't want to take down any of these lights or, or reduce them in, in any way. They're, they're. What we need to plow snow to have safety for people walking. And uh, it, it, the sidewalks now are, they're not overly bright. They're just, they're just. Lit up to where you can walk. And I, I don't think anybody would complain about uh. You know, light getting in their eyes or anything like that. But the sidewalks are, are very safe and easy to walk and you can see everything now. So. That was the main reason.
I don't, yeah, I don't think I'm going to have a problem with lighting up sidewalks and railroad um, areas personally. Um, I would just ask that there's some way, if this is something Josiah does, you know, is up for doing, or if, if it's somebody else, but. Just seeing whether, you know, the, number one, that the light is going toward either. Sidewalks, railroad, or um, your, you know, the developer's apartment building to the south. Um, not going to the, you know, to the, to the west. Um, and then also just, I, I think just making sure that, and I think light pollution can also go up. So I'm not saying taking away light going down, but just having. Fixtures that are um, appropriate to. You know, to have the light go down if it is going up and, you know, causing light pollution, which is, I think, the general reason why this is in here. Um, but, but Josiah, is that along the lines of? Even, I'm not, I, obviously I want to hear what the rest of the council has to say, but is that even a potential ask? Um, for you or for somebody else to, to make that evaluation?
Um. I mean, so, so technically the, the developer would need to provide that. Um, I, I'm not sure if we could. It's not something I've ever done before, but I can find out if you, if uh, if you want me to.
No, I'd be curious to hear the rest of the, I mean, again, I, I'm all for lighting up sidewalks. That's a good thing. Safety, you know, allowing you to plow snow, et cetera. Um, as long as a railroad doesn't care about having their property lit um, down, you know. That I, I don't have issues with that. I just would like to know, I, I, my understanding, novice understanding is. You know, that there are ways and better um, fixtures to direct light down where you want it. And obviously you could. Have light going in all directions, but I think that's what's less desirable. And I guess I just don't know with these fixtures. If they are appropriately directing the light where it needs to be, or if it is causing the light pollution to go in, in various ways. So. Um, however, if, if the rest of the council was okay with that idea, it would just be. Who can make that evaluation and, or report or whatever so that we know. Yeah, this is good over here, but here we'd recommend, you know, some fixtures that maybe directed the light down, you know, especially like on the west side. Um, of the property.
Has there been any complaints in the public at all?
None that I know of, none.
Okay.
Well, we got one complaint. We did get one complaint from the apartment.
It was the apartment. That's not University Heights. I mean, I understand that.
Saying there has been a complaint at all.
I think he's asking about the west side. I mean, yeah. And the apartment, it wasn't about light. It was about uh, noise. And then it was about the dumpster.
There was a, there was a light complaint too. I was just. I, and I'm not saying, I don't, I don't necessarily know that it need to be different. I just see very specific things like looking at the punch list. There's some very. Specific requirements. So I guess what I would expect is just an assessment of like. Is the lighting now as it was planned? And if not, then we can react to that. Or vice versa. It just seems like, okay, here are these, these measurements were outlined, like how does it compare to that original plan? I think we don't know that.
Well, with, with these specifications, were these specifications uh, early on by a, an electrical or lighting engineer, or was it just kind of an arbitrary? We got to start with something.
Um, I think I can maybe answer that Doug. They weren't, it wasn't arbitrary. I mean, the, I don't remember. I'd have to go back to see if this. They weren't, it wasn't arbitrary. I mean, the, I don't remember. I'd have to go back to see if this, this particular. Point was um, was negotiated. But to pick up on, on Sarah's question. The, the reason that these, that these specifications were included. Was so that when we got to the end of the project, the developer would say, okay, here's the measurements you asked for. And then, okay, they're, they're within the, the, the range that we specified, or they're outside the range, but. Here's why, and here's why they should be permitted, but just the data, the information in terms of uh, what's there. That information is not before the council because, because we haven't received it from, from, you haven't received it from the developer. But they weren't arbitrary. They were, they, they came from uh. Some other source documents and included in the developers agreement, uh, you know, from the, from the get-go of uh, of the project, and I. I would think the design of it, although obviously it wasn't involved in that.
I, I would, I was just reading the, the document. It says all lighting building mind luminaires produce a maximum initial. Lumens value no greater than point, zero point one zero. Well. I know that they do that, so we, we're, we are not complying with that. And then no greater than point zero one, ten foot beyond, and I know that we're not complying with that, so. Sarah, what's on the, in the developers agreement and on the plan is being, I guess. Uh, the law's been broken, I guess, if you want to say it that way. I don't really know how to say it, so we, we weren't able. Because if, if I didn't put the lights where I have them, then we would have no, we would have no light on the sidewalk. So um, yeah, we can get, you know, an engineer to come and tell us that. Um, but it's, it's very clear that, that, that we broke these laws or these, this. Disordments or this, 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 um, you know, this developers plan. We, 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 we did something. You know, that it doesn't say we, we're allowed to do. So I guess um, we're, we're needing the city council to. Maybe revise this particular item and say. Or just, or just delete it, I guess.
Greg, what's the, I'm, I'm not understanding, I guess, the, so. I guess I get what you're saying. You had, you put the lights in where you put them in. Is it, what, a different fixture fixed the problem?
No, there's a diff, the, the, the. The developers agreement says that you can't have light. At that particular point. And we, for the project, for the sidewalk to actually work. You have to have light at that particular point. That's the sidewalk. It's, 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 it's uh, it's on the railroad property. The whole sidewalk. The entire sidewalk is on the railroad property, so we have to have light there no matter what.
Um, council, what, what I'm asking council, I guess, is whether we would want him to. Come to us with a report that basically says. Yeah, you know, we're in compliance maybe on the west side or not, but here's, you know, here's what shows the east side, the railroad tracks. We're not in compliance at the boundary line, but we are in compliance. You know, ten feet from the railroad or not. I guess that's what I, that's what I was wondering as a first step. I'm not saying I'm looking to. You know, omit any requirement at this time. I was just kind of curious to know. The current state of things, and I, I don't know how difficult that would be. It seems. Pretty hypothetically possible just to have, instead of going around and testing and saying. You're complying in this way. It would just be interesting to know, okay, you're complying in this way in these places, but not in this place. Here's, you know, how much you're out of compliance. But again, that's based on, I, I, I certainly understand if you want to say. Nope, you gotta comply with this, but I guess I was just thinking because of the sidewalk issue and lighting that. And, you know, our intent being to not light up the community. Um, if something like that would be uh, at least the next step, just to see. The current status of things and see if maybe, maybe we would be okay with it. I don't know. If we see. Where it's, you know, impacting um, area and where it's not. Does that make any sense?
It does. Yeah, I think that would be helpful, because I think we'd have to make, I mean, reading the notes, we'd have to make. A change, right, to the developers agreement?
Yeah, I would, I would say, I would, I would say as an electrician. We are in compliance on the west boundary line. Uh, it's dark. It's very dark in that twenty foot buffer. It's very dark in that twenty foot buffer. I would say we are in compliance on that side, and the other two sides, we're way out of compliance. So.
So I actually drove down there the other night and looked to take a look at the lighting. He does have Dan Cass lighting. I, I'm not a lighting expert. I can't talk to you about lumens. And foot candles and all of that. He does have Dan Cass lighting. I think the lighting is appropriate for the hotel area, the sidewalks. It did not seem to be. Overlit on the western boundary. But I mean, if you want to have this measured, I'm not gonna, you know, I, I don't know anything about that, but. I, I would not see changing it to make it dimmer on the sidewalks at all. And I. Again, I'm not an expert, but I didn't see a problem on the western boundary. And I, we also drove down Olive Court. The thing that I saw that was shining everywhere like the sun was the scoreboard was lit that night.
At Kinnick, yeah.
At Kinnick. Yeah, and that was, oh my gosh, where, what is that light? And like, little way down the road, and it's. Scoreboard, so, yeah.
Well. Yeah. Thanks, Lisa. I also looked at it. I've looked at it. Since June, since it's built, and I've been over there many times in the evening. And uh, I think we have the advantage of seeing it. Instead of, you know, when it was written, it was like, oh, let's use these parameters. You know what I mean? And that's how it was set up four years ago, and let's use these parameters. But I can see how Greg and Jim said, this isn't lighted, this isn't lit enough. I think Jim was saying that. And so let's put more light here, and they know it doesn't fit the parameters. In those two areas, but we have the advantage now to actually look at it. I don't think it's gonna make a difference if I know it's so many foot candles and so. Greg's an electrician. Greg knows lighting. I, I mean, I looked at it. I think it looks, it's lit enough, it's safe. I would sure hate to dim it down. And, and put it back to where it was supposed to be, but we have the advantage of looking at it.
I think it goes along with about any project. I mean, you always end up having change orders. I mean, uh, you know, it happens every day at the hospital, you know, from what the original plan is to the, the time it's finished. And, and keep in mind, that extra lighting costs money. I mean, these guys are paying for that extra light. You know, that's electricity. It's coming out of their pocket, so if anything, we should be thanking them.
Yes, I guess, I would.
What?
I, oh, sorry.
Well, I just said, so what, I guess, what do you think we should do? I mean, Doug or Lisa, I mean, do you? I mean, I agree, I don't personally think it's a problem, and I'd rather have lit sidewalks than their sidewalks, so. I mean, do you guys think we should just strike this from the list? And say no changes needed?
Well, I guess what I would ask from, from, you, you know, this, I, I don't know the cost of doing these things. Um, so that could be potentially relevant in the trade-off, but, I mean, number one, I would, I would go down um. More often over the next month before the next meeting. Number two, if we had a report that said. Yeah, this is where it is on the west boundary. This is where it is on the east boundary. Then that could potentially be what the amendment is. If everyone's happy with it now, and I might be too. I don't know. Again, I'm not saying I'm, I'm. You know, against well-lit sidewalks, and you know, that's not true at all. So to me, it would just be knowing what the status quo is. Um, checking it out, and if everyone's good with the status quo, and we get this report back that says it's, you know. Within whatever the limits or whatever, just say, okay, that's what it is. We all agree that it's fine. Let's amend it. We're done. You know, that, that's as simple as it is.
We can, we can make it pretty simple. We could say it's bright on this edge, it's bright on that edge, and it's dark on that edge.
Well, Greg, the thing, Greg, though, that I don't like about that is, you know, it's, it might be bright at a certain rate right now, but then. Two years from now, or whatever, it might be bright at a whole different level, and I just would like to have some sort of baseline. Just as, as my job trying to, you know, keep things accountable. That, so that's really my interest in it, is I'm not saying that you're doing something wrong. By, by doing this the way it is right now. I just, I think there would be a value to a baseline to understand where we're at. And um, I, I don't anticipate trying to be, you know, um, disagreeable about this otherwise.
What does other, what do others think?
I agree. I agree with what Nick said. I think it's good to get a baseline and just to be conscious of the neighbors. I mean, the reason you put these things in places for. Obviously, to protect people, it's for light pollution, it's to keep people happy, and those numbers. Aren't entirely arbitrary. They're, they're, you know, for a reason, and so just good to be conscious of that, but I also agree with Louise. If we needed more lighting there, then, you know, Greg and Jim are smart guys, and they put it in, so I, I agree with both, but I think that. I think I just, I just, I want to be careful not to sign off on something that, you know, may have i- impact someone. I'm just putting myself in the. Neighbor's shoes. If I'm trying to go to sleep and I have my blinds and my, you know, curtains that I've had for years, and now all of a sudden I can't sleep at night because there's. You know, five thousand foot candles, I'm just making them numbers, I don't know, shining in my window, I would, I wouldn't like that, right? And so. I mean, you know.
I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and do that. Um, I'll go ahead and do that. I'll give you guys the light levels on both, there's three sides. There's the. Three sides of the properties triangle, so I'll give you the light levels on each side of the property, and we can. Amend item ten to those light levels, I guess, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I think that's a great place to come.
About, we asked the people that live next door. They'll say turn them off.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the next item. Which? Is.
They have that as the lead certification.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you.
Well, and I'll take that. I guess I'm uh. You know, when we, when we built the building, I told Rohrbach and, and uh. His company that everything, everything in the building, we wanted to be the highest efficiency. Uh, you know, the state of the art, everything that was possible at this point, and that is what we have. We've got. Well, starting with the insulation and, and we've got. Two inches of foam all the way down the foundation. We've got uh, six inch walls with an extra. Inch of foam or two, sometimes, some places, two inches of foam uh, with the stucco. We've got a completely uh. Rubberized seal around the whole building. And um, then all the mechanical systems are. Would, would all meet uh, lead certification. They're, well, what I, what you, what you want to call lead, really all it is is. The highest efficiency that you can get out of um, products these days, so. Uh, our boilers are all ninety-five percent plus efficient. Our water heaters are the same. They're, they're up in the ninety-five to ninety-eight percent efficient range. The washing machines and dryers, um, the new ones come with um, less water usage. The dryers are now controlled by humidistats instead of just going on a timer, and those are all. Innovations probably in the last five to ten years, so right now um. This building is, is about as energy efficient as, as we can possibly make it. The, the heating cooling system is all heat pump, which is. Uh, kind of similar to geothermal, only it's, it's not using ground source heat. It's just using heat from the, from the air, but. Um, all of those, all of those systems that we have in there are, like I say, extremely energy efficient and. And it, we, we did pay a lot to, to go to those, go to those lengths and get these energy efficient systems. So, and I guess Greg already talked about the lighting, but all of the, all of the lighting in the building is LED. Um, all the, all the plumbing systems are low water usage. Our toilets are one point two eight gallon flush. Our faucets are all uh, one gallon per minute. The, well, I guess one thing that we, we did in this building that, that I doubt is done in, in any other buildings is we have. Uh, air purification systems in our public spaces. We have a uh. It's like, it's a hydrogen peroxide generator with LED, LED lighting and ultraviolet light, and that. Actually purifies the air and kills COVID, so that's in all our public spaces on first floor. Uh, and other than that, and the building is all ADA compliant. All, all the entrances are ADA. Um. So we did. You know, we, we pretty much did anything that you can to get up to the highest efficiency levels that are available today, so that's. And if you, if you get the certificate or whatever, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's. It's really just a piece of paper that the architects make a bunch of money on it, and I, I've done plenty of lead certific- certification buildings. I'm not interested in paying an architect, you know, whatever, to say that, so I can have a plaque on the wall to say that. It's, but we do want to put the systems in. And that's what, that's what we have here. We've got um, a lot of radiant floor heat in, in this building as well, so, but. And I don't, is Mike Haverkamp running the show here, or is it, because I, I did send him some pictures of some of these systems, but.
I'll go, I haven't seen those yet.
Oh, you haven't? Okay.
Jim, while he's pulling those up, can I ask, I mean, when I read this, it says that during the. Um, construction document phase, you shall admit, submit the scorecard. It also says that. You're, you basically are supposed to have the intent to.
Right. Yeah, in other words, we don't really have.
Well, I'm just wondering, so what are you, so, so you didn't submit the scorecard, or? Are you saying you don't want to even submit the scorecard? I don't think this is.
Well, what, what good is the scorecard gonna do? I guess is what my, my point is. Where the building, the building is built, it's got all the high. Efficiency systems in it. I mean, yeah, I guess I could spend a lot of time giving you the paperwork on. Uh, specs on boilers, water heaters, uh, and, and show you that they're ninety-eight percent efficient.
I'm just wondering, why, why did you agree to this previously? I guess I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I'm aware that O U P went through that. I just don't, just, if you could give me some background as to why you. Agreed to it initially, but why you kind of change, are changing your mind on it. That's what I'm just curious.
Well, I think, I think if I remember right, when I was in the meetings, I, what I said to the council was. That our intent is to have the most highly, high efficiency building possible, and it would meet lead certifications because. Oh, of all the systems that, that we put in, and that was my intent, and that's what we did. I don't really remember saying I was gonna give you a scorecard. Um. What, I guess, what I'd like to do is if you do want information on these systems, I'll, I would give, give you all the specs. Yeah, like there's, those are the boilers. Uh, now these run the, the, some of the heating and air conditioning. Or some of the heating systems, and they also run the, the in-floor heat, but these are uh, Well McLean Ultra boilers. And they're between ninety-five and ninety-eight percent efficient. They're modulating boilers. They run. When we don't need much heat, they run at a real low volume, and then as we ramp up and need more heat, as it gets colder, then these boilers. Kick up and uh, produce more, more energy. But we have five of those boilers throughout the building.
Well, can I ask this? So just, just to be clear, like. I, I, again, I'm, I'm not really decided one way or the other on the, this issue, one way or the other. I just am wondering, so. What would it, would be required for you to just submit the scorecard, regardless of what it comes back at? Do you have a sense of what would be required to do that?
I, I guess if I could get a scorecard, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what that is.
Decided, do you know?
Uh, I, I do not.
Maybe Steve, I don't, does anybody know?
Well, Greg, you talked to me about the scorecard, and you tried to go to your architect. I asked about this specifically. Did you want to speak on that? Is Greg still there?
I, sorry, I had you on, I had you on mute. Sorry, I was talking, had you on mute. Yeah, I talked to uh, so. Give you a little pretense, uh, Rohrbach and Shosits is our, is our architect. They recently went out of business. Um, I did call the, or text the, the, the lead architect on the, on this. Um, I did call the, or text the, the, the lead architect on the, on this project. And I asked him if he could get me a scorecard. And I asked him a couple of times and he once he responded, yes, I'll see if I can get you one. And then he never responded because he works for a different company now. You know, this job is not important to him. Or um, he just seemed to be non-responsive. I've never seen a lead, I've never seen a scorecard. I don't know what it looks like. I don't have, like Josiah, I don't even know what it is. Um, I don't know if it's something that has to be filled out by the lead representative or any of that. Um, so I, I don't even know where to get one.
Could we just table this, this discussion until next month? I mean, so we can all understand what even is required. It may not be an issue if it's just something where you just submit.
Yeah.
You know, maybe someone else comes in and looks, you know, does the evaluation for, I guess, all we know. And maybe it's just not even your problem. I mean, it's, it, it sounds like from what Jim, you're, you're saying, well, you weren't intending to be lead certified or whatever, but you were intending to be really efficient. And so who knows? I mean, maybe you're, you know, you've met the requirements and then some.
That, that's exactly what it is. I mean, for example, we did the um, the fire station on Dodge Street for the city of Iowa City. And that's what they call a gold lead certified. Um, we put in the same boilers there that we, that we used here. Now, and, and all I did was submit my paperwork to, to the architect and, and the specifications on the boilers and things like that. And then I, I don't know what they did with it, but, but.
Are we willing to look at council? Do we, are we okay looking, having this looked into? Before next meeting, is that okay?
That's fine. I understand that. I think lead certification has more to do. It's, it's much more broad than just the mechanical electrical system. I think it has to do with building, that's everything, every little piece of the puzzle, but I'm fine with that. Waiting, Nick.
And the rest of the council? Yeah, okay. There we go. Okay, we'll go on to the next, which it looked like was solar.
Yeah, that's right.
So Greg, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, the solar, we have conduits ran in the building, rooftop. Yeah, we made, we made provisions for solar. The we looked into it and I looked at the pricing of it and then I talked to, um, I got some consulting uh, on it. And we determined that it's, it's not feasible. It's not worth the payback. Um, to put it in on a building this size. Um, you'd have to put the entire roof. And if we put a, a couple of them, it's not going to do anything. You'd have to cover the whole roof or you'd have to have canopies down low. Um, it would just take a massive amount of solar. And the payback didn't work out. I, I consulted with Menards on this. Menards, um, you know, they have four hundred stores across the country and, and I've tried to talk them into putting solar on their buildings. Because, you know, I would, you know, since I'm the electrical contractor, I would, you know, get a lot of that work. And they said, we, we've done several um, uh, investigations on solar. And they just said, we will not be doing it because it does not uh, pay back. It's not worth the payback. So it's uh, to them, it wasn't an option. And I felt like, you know, that we would forego that as well. Um, and it costs a lot of money. In the neighborhood.
Did on this is you, the building will have conduits and control wiring designated for solar panels routed to the roof from the electrical panel to accommodate the use of solar. So you installed that.
Yeah, we have conduits up there. Cause you know, if it ever, if the, the pricing of solar panels ever comes down and it's worth doing, then absolutely we would do it. At this point, it's just, it's just so expensive. It's, it's not feasible.
Well, and we lost, we lost about two thirds of our roof to the sixth floor restaurant area. Because now we have, we have an open patio and we also have that sloped, the sloped roof. We can't put any solar panels on the sloped roof uh, because it voids the warranty of the roof as well as now sort of a safety issue too. We, we have uh, bars that go across there to keep ice from sliding down that, that particular roof. So what, what we're left with, the flat part of the roof that we have left is about twenty percent of the, the building. So there's, there's really not as much space up there as we had when there was originally going to just be a totally flat roof.
Steve, can I ask? There's not a requirement for them to put solar panels on, right? It's just that they have to have it ready for solar panels is, or I, I don't know what the exact requirement is.
Some of the, there were some bidding requirements. There were coverage and percentage of power estimates. Those are, were preliminary things uh, that are easier to talk about. You know, the language says that there'll be that solar arrays or facilities will be incorporated in the design. Construction. I mean, I, I think when you say a solar arrays is, is incorporated in the construction and operation. I, I think that you're saying you're putting solar, solar panels in.
It doesn't have to necessarily power the whole building. It just has to be.
Yeah, it definitely does not have to power the whole building. The, the development agreement doesn't speak to that.
Since it hasn't incorporated at some level, basically. It could have eighteen inch solar panel on the roof and that would meet the requirement. And in, in which case, yeah, I wouldn't want to hold them to that necessarily. So, I mean, it's yeah, I don't.
So Jim and Greg, do you, so you currently have conduits and wiring for panels that go, that go to the, the, to the um,
Yeah, we have conduits. We have. Yeah, we, we, we got conduits going up there for sure, but we don't have any wiring pull in because you don't know till you know what your load is. You don't pull the one, the size of the wire until you know what your load is. But yeah, we have conduits going up there. Several.
Well, and what I think what I'd like from the council, if we can at this point is if, if it becomes economically feasible, what, what I'm seeing, what we have left on the roof that we could actually put solar panels on is it's back over the, the south, the south end of the building and it's roughly two or three thousand square feet. Um, I don't know how much that would actually produce. But I think if it becomes economically feasible, we would do it. Uh, but at this point, it, it, it really is, well, it'll never power the whole building, but obviously we would use all the power that would ever be produced if we could get, get something up there that, that makes sense.
Are you willing to get a bid? On that?
Well, I would. Gave us a bid at one time.
Yeah, I don't remember what that was, but I looked, I looked at uh, Menards sells solar panels and they sell them on a large, large scale. And I looked at those two and it was in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand. From what I remember.
Did you say two hundred thousand a panel?
Yeah, yeah, no, two hundred thousand.
For the whole job.
Service what we want.
I see.
To service the entire building or for the two to three thousand square feet?
To service the two, three thousand square feet. Yeah, I, well, I, I don't remember. Such a long time ago. I, I, I think I came up with a couple panels or a s- uh, several panels that I wanted to, to try to to service with the solar. I, I can't remember how, how I came up with that, but it was, it was um, it was a lot. Well, I might have went, I might have went with the whole service. I might have went with the twenty-four hundred year service, actually. That um, I, because two hundred thousand is a lot of money. So I, I, I probably went with the whole service, the whole building.
Well, so, I mean, are you guys, you know, this is, this is not the council speaking, just me. I mean, do you think if you have the, the um, basically infrastructure to put up solar panels on three thousand square feet? Um, are you willing to have Moxie Solar give you an estimate for doing that?
Uh, yeah, I can give us a price. I'm, I'm good with that.
I mean, and then I obviously yield to the rest of council. I mean, I, to me, my memory of it was that this was part of the selling point of you know, of the hotel, that it was going to be, you know, efficient and have, you know, solar panels and that sort of thing. It just seemed like that was part of the talk around town. So again, it's putting us in a situation to um, you know, either go back and say, well, no, we, we didn't, you know, end up having this potential, potentially material. Um, you know, component of this project. Um, but so I guess that's my only thought is if you say, you know, if there was some sort of finding that it really are only three thousand square feet, that would be eligible at this point because of the final design. And then you got an estimate for what that would cost. Um, I, to me, that would be interesting information, but I, I guess I, I'm wondering what the rest of council says.
I just, I don't know if, I don't know what the payback on that would be. Um, and I don't know how much it would actually help our hotel as far as giving it power. Um, I don't.
Yeah, I guess with, with a lot of these requirements though, Greg, I just, I don't know that they are all about your bottom. I mean, if they're about your bottom line, you do them anyway, right? And so I guess the way I look at it is these are things that the community was wanting in exchange for the, you know, PUD agreement. And so you know, it's kind of like, well, if you come and say, well, they don't financially, you know, pay out for us or may not pay out for a while. To me, that's not a persuasive argument in and of itself. But you know, I also understand that you know, things do change, design changes occurred and all of that. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to just have a dialogue about it. I just, that's, for me, that's a non-starter to just say, well, I don't think financially I want to do this for my, you know, for the bottom line. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. And if it was, like I say, worse, if it would have been worse, like people put solar to save, energy to save money um, for like, you know, electric cost. And you know, it, from what I'm, the consultant that I've been is, it's not worth it because the, the panels actually break down and, and stop working before before it saves you money.
You're saying not only from a financial standpoint, but also from a sustainability standpoint. It's not always worked up to be.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, it doesn't give you, you, you end up spending more money by putting them on there because they don't hold up long enough to pay for them.
You, you, well, and I think that's what Nick's, i- if you, if all you're saying is it, it ends up costing more money. I think that's where Nick's saying, well, that's not really part of the equation. But if, if you're saying it costs more money, but it also uses more resources and solar is not all that it's worked out to be in terms of sustainability. If, if that's what you're saying, I think that's.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's what my consultants told me was it, it obviously it costs a lot of money to install it, but then you don't get what you don't get enough out of it with a, a building this large to, to sustain um, paying for them. Um, even I, I guess I'm not explaining it very well, but.
I think Bobby and I are talking the same language in the sense that I hear Bobby saying, you know, if environmentally, I think that's the, the goal here. It's not the bottom line financially. It's, which presumably is for some people, I would, I would guess, but it's more, you know, is the material for the solar panel, plus the installation, plus, you know, all that. More waste than, than help in terms of the environment. I think that's an argument, but I, I don't know that that's proven for me right now. Um, that, you know, that the whole solar industry or, or whatever is not workable, but um, that would be an argument that would be relevant. I just, yeah. So, so Bobby, I, I appreciate that because that's, I think that is relevant.
And it, it, yeah, I mean, obviously that's a huge conversation. It would, but it could be. I think it, I think it very well could be for this building, this specific building. And you know, the energy it takes to get the panels up on the roof and, you know, whatever. I, I would be willing to hear that, you know, argument for sure, if it, if it is, but um, it's, yeah, I.
Does have a, a solar tax credit yet for commercial projects. But they have to be up and running by December thirty-first at the end of this year because Iowa will be sunsetting the tax credit program for solar installs. Residential is already done. That happened last June. But commercially, you are available up to twenty thousand dollars. It's uh, uh, available for right now in Iowa.
I'm, I guess on, I don't know where you guys are at. I'm about cashed out mentally right now. Um, and I got crying kids in the next room, but that's beside the point. Um, do you want to, what do you guys want to do on this topic? Do you want to table this one or, or?
I, I would be fine. You know, to, as long, it doesn't sound like there's any safety issues. I think, you know, it seems like they've been working toward compliance that a lot from what Steve has said and Josiah has said, I, I think a lot has been done. Um, I would be fine even tabling the rest of these for, until next meeting. Um, we can either continue the discussion or hopefully the list would be shorter. We don't have to talk through things. I, I don't know if Jim and Greg think that they'll be able to do much over the next month. Um, or not.
I, a couple of these items, the fencing, I'm going to try to get done here uh, on the railroad. I did, I did just get the, the license agreement. Um, and then the, 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 the security gate block, it should have been in my office today. That'll be done. So those two items will be knocked off. Um, and then the only other one we had to talk about is this pavilion. Um, I don't know if you guys want to talk about that now or the next meeting.
Well, can't you quickly talk about it? I mean, you don't want to build it.
Yeah, I, we just don't want to build it so, for tailgaters to destroy it. Um, and it, it, it's, it's, it's a, like, so the reason it was on there, I wish I would have caught it early on. The reason it's on there, so Marriott Courtyard, you know, the courtyard, they Marriott Courtyard likes to have a little gazebo. They call it their courtyard area. And um, and this, it doesn't work for this uh, for this particular location. Um, this is more of a business traveler uh, building, you know, designated for um, business travel and such. So I guess the courtyard, we we just didn't want, you know, people destroying it and beating it up and throwing stuff at it. I, I could just, I could just see people throwing stuff at it all the time, right?
Well, we may, and we may put, we may put something out there later that we'd come back to the city council and say, you know, do you like this sculpture or this design? But what, what's happened at the hotel now is we expanded all of our outside seating on the railroad side of the building. And that's where everybody migrates when they go outside. They almost always go out to that outside patio area. So th- this front area really is not, uh, we, we don't need that particular attraction or it really doesn't do us any good. And
We have, we have seating on, on the south side as well. That big patio as well on the south side too. So.
I've heard no interest in a pavilion from anybody ever. So I don't know that I, I, does anybody heard any like community or Steve, did you have any requests for this? Cause I, I don't.
No, and then the thing I, I mean, obviously other council, the councils can speak about the community uh, interest. I, I haven't heard any. This was an item, uh, I, I checked all of my notes and went back and looked. I think this only appeared uh, from, from Jim and Greg's designs. I mean, this wasn't uh, negotiated or requested by the community, the city council. It was just, it was there. This is a kind of sort of a classic example. It's shown on the plans. The council's supposed to approve the, the, you know, kind of the as-built construction. So, you know, somebody like Josiah with a careful eye says, hey, there's a where's the pavilion? Um, that, that's, that's my recollection and I defer to Josiah or Louise or anybody else who was there.
We talked that we didn't even remember it.
Is it, what is it grass right now or is it?
Yeah, it's green space. It's nice green space.
I'm fine, I'm fine with greens.
Perfect.
Okay. I, I might, if I could, I, I, I'm Nick, you asked a question about the solar and, and what, you know, kind of what the intent was, what the requirement was. And you know, the language is, it kind of twists and turns. And I'm sure you noticed that, you know, it ends with, it, it starts with the design and construction phase, operation. It, it talks about getting a specific bid and then it says something about feasibility. So it's all sort of, it's all sort of in there. I, I would not at all be, feel comfortable, you know, advising the council that by gosh, they have. not at all be, feel comfortable, you know, advising the council that by gosh, they have to have extra percent solar, they have to have solar up there. It seems to me like that was the idea to have it there and to have some bids. And so, you know, I think the idea of postponing that for consideration of maybe at least get a bid and find out what, what feasibility is the word that's used. So I, I think that, I think that plays a part of what the, what the commitment by, uh, by their developers was. Sorry to go back to that. I just wanted to mention.
Okay. So Greg, you're, Greg and Jim, you're going to get a bid for that?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll talk to Moxie. And then there's, there's another one. I can't remember Eagle or somebody else that, and, and we can see if, if it is feasible. Because I, I don't know the exact square footage we even have left there to, to put panels. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get some bids from them. Then we can have that for next meeting.
Okay, very good. So we got through everything and we're gonna look at it again on October 12th. And see what you get checked off. And the reports will be back. And I think that's everything, right? Did I cover, is that pretty much cover everything? So, uh, in the meantime, council can look at it, maybe get Greg and Jim to look at different things. I think that might be good too. Or whatever you like to do. So are, are, are we finished with that? There's any more questions? Okay, we'll go on to announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
So the, so the resolution.
We have the resolution, don't we?
Yeah, 2140. My suggestion, based upon my understanding of the council's discussion, would be that you insert the date, October 12th, 2021, uh, in the, in the resolution and, and then pick this back up next month.
Okay, 2140 with the inclusion of October 12th date. Is there a motion for that resolution?
So moved.
Okay, Nick uh, makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Further discussion?
The only discussion, I guess for me is, it says further resolve, the city staff is directed to make recommended revisions, amendments, modifications to approval documents consistent with the discussion today. I, I don't think we're, we're amending anything. I think I'm sensing that we're not gonna, at some point, we're going to have maybe something presented that maybe clarifies the lighting, um, that maybe is clear that we don't care, that, that the pavilion is no longer a requirement. Like those sorts of things would come later, right? Steve, we're not saying that anything's actually going to happen from that paragraph.
I think that's right, Nick. And I, thanks for asking and clarifying. I think we're probably going to have a very similar resolution next month. And then the council can give that direction as a body. And then we can, we can prepare those modifying documents and have you can have the council consider them at another point. But no, I, I agree.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, so this is 2140 is before you roll call vote.
Scott?
Hi.
Wales.
Hi.
Herbold?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Chris Sullivan?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Any announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none. The meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks everyone for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.